All right, good morning.
Reporting in progress.
Good morning, welcome to the Thurston County Board of County Commissioners. Public hearings regarding the 2627 biennial budget. It is 10:05 a.m. My name is Ty Mensah, Chair of the Board. To my right is Vice Chair Commissioner Wayne Fornier, Commissioner Caroline Mahia. To my left, Commissioner Emily Klaus and Commissioner Rachel Grant is participating virtually. The purpose of these public hearings, and there's going to be a series of them today, is to accept and consider public comment related to each piece of the 26 and 27 biennial budget. The first piece here at 10 a.m. is law and justice, the clerk's office, district court, prosecuting attorney, sheriff, law enforcement and corrections, superior and juvenile courts, public defense and pretrial services. These will be hybrid public hearings. Those wishing to testify have joined by Zoom, emailed in comment or mailed in comment. If you wish to testify in this hearing remotely, please visit the Thurston County homepage online and select B O C C meetings, hearings and work session agendas, then meetings and agendas. The information to join this public hearing remotely is posted. Susan mentioned we are back to our live streaming capabilities, so that will be in effect going forward. So to start things off, the clerk of the board will provide a statement regarding legal notices, and so I will turn to clerk.
Thank you Chair. Good afternoon, good morning. This morning, we'd like to inform you of the status of the legal notices for the budget public hearings for R C W 3640060 and R C W 3640071. The legal notices were published in the official county newspaper, which is the Esqali Valley News. The legal notices were published on Thursday, November 13th, Thursday, November 20th and Thursday, November 27th. The legal notices were for all the budget hearings, expenses of the whole and for the revenue.
Okay. And now County Manager would like to provide some introductory remarks before we get.
Thank you Chair and Commissioners. Thank you everyone also for being here. Just want to start off by thanking our entire organization getting to this point. And this particular budget cycle has been challenging and hard fought, but we could not have done that without all the hard work from our amazing staff at every level. Secondly, Commissioners, our department directors stand ready to follow up with any questions that may be asked and understanding that we have until Wednesday when the final deliberation. So if there are questions, we look forward to following up and providing that information to either members of the public or to Commissioners that may have those questions. And with that Chair, I'll turn over to you.
So you've got published and you provided in the packet the affidavits showing that legal notices were properly published in the paper of record?
That is correct Commissioner.
On the 13th, 20th and 27th?
Yep, absolutely.
Thank you. So this process which will kind of track for each section of our public hearings where again law and justice this morning, Summer Miller, Budget and Fiscal Manager will provide information on the topic, some background. The hearings are split into multiple sections with recesses in between. After each section, those wishing to testify will have three minutes to comment and/or ask questions. An office or department representative may answer your questions after your testimony is complete. Those in person will be called to testify first and then will go to those online. Time may not be given to another person. When you are called on, please state your name and address for the record, and I will repeat these instructions prior to each public comment period. So our public hearing is now open, and I'm going to ask Summer Miller, Budget and Fiscal Manager to present information on the budget topic and any additional information requested by the Board.
Thank you. Summer Miller, Budget and Fiscal Manager in the Commissioners' Office. As you'll see on this slide, here is the schedule of events for today, commencing at 10 a.m. and ending at 5 p.m. this afternoon. We'll go through law and justice, general government, transportation, environment and land use, health and human services, water and sewer, general facility charges, revenue to support the budget and the capital improvement plan. Kicking us off this morning are our law and justice partners, which includes the clerk's office, the coroner, district court, pretrial services, the prosecuting attorney's office, the sheriff's office, the coroner, superior and juvenile courts and public defense. Clerk's office is led by Clerk Linda Meyer Enlow. They record superior court proceedings, maintains the court's records, collects fines and fees ordered by the court. The primary change requests or requests for funding in the 2627 biennial are extending funding for a records auditor position as well as a general fund reduction. Next, we'll move on to the coroner's office, which is led by Gary Warnock. Our coroner, description is reviews and investigates the deaths occurring in Thurston County. The major request is to move the pathologist's budget to the autopsy budget over the next Then we have district court. Judge Brett Buckley is the presiding judge. Frankie Peters is the court administrator. They hear misdemeanor, traffic, small and civil claims cases and mental health and veterans. Court, a major request are to add F T E for the Lacey-Tanino I L A as well as the Olympia I L A for court services. Next, we have pretrial services. Director Carrie Henin, they conduct pretrial investigations and screenings, make recommendations for pretrial release, supervisors release defendants and connects defendants to community resources. General fund reduction was included in the biennial budget development. Next, we have the prosecuting attorney's office. John Tunheim is our prosecutor. They prosecute misdemeanor and felony crimes, enforces the rights of children entitled to child support and serves as legal representative for Thurston County Government. The requests submitted are to add some cell phones for deputy prosecutors, victim advocate positions, a vehicle for a P A O investigator, chief criminal deputy, paralegal one position, deputy prosecuting attorneys, paralegal one positions, legal assistant two positions as well as a general fund reduction. I'd like to notate that all of these office and department submissions for the budget include general fund and all other funds. We have the sheriff's office, law enforcement. Our sheriff is Derek Sanders, provides emergency response and law enforcement in the unincorporated county. The requests submitted are budget authority for the high intensity drug trafficking areas grant, a contract with the city of Tanino, reclassification of evidence technician to a communications chief, the Washington traffic safety grant for DUI enforcement as well as a general fund reduction. In the sheriff's corrections department, we have operating adult corrections facilities and alternative programs that support successful reintegration into the community. Their request comprised of a general fund reduction. Next, we have superior court. Judge John Skender is the presiding judge. Kristin Jensen is our superior court administrator. The court here is major criminal matters, felonies, civil cases, appeals, adoptions, dependency cases, family law, protection orders, probates and guardianship. The request comprised of extending the end date for ARPA funded positions, reclassifying a drug court manager position, adding budget authority for pro temp grant, treatment sales tax cost allocations as well as a general fund reduction. Family and juvenile court. Judge Indu Thomas is the chief judge for family and juvenile court. Ted Bryan is our juvenile court administrator. They provide court probation and detention services for youth up to age 18. The requests submitted are to reduce the BECA revenue and F T E, add revenue for the CASA grant, adjust revenue and expenditure for the CJAA grant as well as a general fund reduction. And lastly, we have public defense. Patrick O'Connor is our director. He provides legal defense services to indigenous individuals, and R C W 10101 is a grant increase that was submitted as well as a Washington State Supreme Court indigent defense request.
Questions for Summer before we get to all the comment? No. Summer, I have a question. So the bullets underneath, you know, you said requests submitted.
Mm-hmm.
And then, and then there's, it indicates where there's general fund reduction. Do these bullets reflect, they don't necessarily reflect things the Board did or didn't grant? They were requests made by the department?
These are all of the requests that the Board agreed or the Board provided funding for at that point in time for general fund and all other funds that the offices and departments have.
Okay, so these reflect preliminary decisions of the Board?
Yes, sir.
Okay, just wanted to make sure. Okay, if any other questions, we'll go to public comment. So at this point, if you're called, you'll have three minutes to either comment or ask questions of the leaders of the various offices and departments. After each person speaks, the office or department representative will be given the opportunity to come forward and respond to the question. They may choose to follow up at a later point, that's pretty typical. And then we'll go to the next person who would like to provide comments. So we'll kind of go commenter by commenter. Those who are in person will be called first and then we'll go to those online. As I said, you can't donate time to another person. So I have three people signed up, I'm going to start there and then we'll call for anyone that didn't get to sign up and then we'll go online. So Mr. Pettit, you are first with Scott Herridge on deck.
My name is John Pettit, live on Rich Road in East Olympia. First thing I want to address is your intentional act to violate my rights to ask individual questions of each individual elected official as per the state law. If that's not provided, we can plan on taking action to void this entire process. It's, it's completely ridiculous. In fact, it is authoritarian. You have the obligation to let me ask questions of each individual elected official. That's under R C W 3640060. So in dealing with your expected games, I have questions for every single elected official and knowing that you would probably try to pull something as usual, I created a whole list of questions which I will hand to them so they can answer all these questions. The fact of the matter is, is that every single one of these elected officials are elected for the purpose of serving the public, not to be subject to your micromanagement. You are to provide a budget that is capable, quality and capable of dealing with their needs. Now, that being said, we can use the example of the clerk's office. And the clerk's office would be a real fine example because clerk is kind of like putting gasoline in the car. Without the clerk's office being able to fully function, that means that the courts can't fully function. That means that all of the people's rights are going to be violated because you have decided that we don't have to supply clerk duties to the superior court, to the district court, to all of the different courts. Now, once again, I'm requesting three minutes with each individual elected official, and I'm placing that on the record. Questions which I am asking of every elected official are the duties performed by the office you have having been to mandated or direct or discretionary under state law. Is the current level of F T Es, what is the current level F T Es in the budget? The budget you signed off doesn't have one. They haven't presented a full budget. Do you have excessive personnel to provide the duties to cover the time and locations that your office serves? Is the proposed budget provided more or less for personnel for your office in the next budget cycle? Has Thurston County grown in population and needs for additional services? Are you able to do the same or more work for less funding for personnel? Do you feel you have adequate funding to operate the office during the biennial budget for the years 25 and 27 and why? Now, you've heard my request that I have time? I would like you to formally answer whether you are going to follow the state law or whether you're going to make a mockery of the state law by not allowing me to have personal questions to each individual elected official.
Same process we did last year, Mr. Pettit. We went through this with you last year. We, we have gotten advice from our prosecuting attorney's office that this process is in accordance with state law, and we're going to follow the same process we did last year.
Well.
Your time is up, so I'm going to give an opportunity to any of the elected officials because a general set of questions were answered there, asked if anyone would like to respond to that. Mr. Pettit's going to hand it to you, and I'm sure you can follow up at a later point, but if anybody that wants to make a response to any of that this morning has that opportunity. I'm not seeing any, so. Mr., uh, Madam Clerk. Mr., uh, Madam Clerk? Yes, absolutely. You have as much time as you need to respond.
So, I do have the questions that Mr. Pettit has presented to me. Are the lawful duties performed by the office you have been elected to mandated or discretionary under law? All but two areas of my office are mandated by RCW. The two discretionary areas are support to victims of domestic violence. Victims come to the clerk's office for support and for preparation of protection order applications to the court. My staff prepares them, advises them on the process before the court, and helps them set up safety plans. The other area that is discretionary in my office is the facilitator program. The facilitators assist litigants prepare for their final dissolution custody actions per local court rule, which requires that their final paperwork be reviewed before they present to the court. That is not an area that I need to provide, but it is very helpful to the public. What is the current level of FTEs budgeted for the office you oversee? Forty-two. I have not had an increase in FTEs. In fact, this level is the same level I had in the early 2000s. Do you have excessive personnel to perform the duties and cover the time and locations that your office serves? No. Is the proposed budget provided more or less for personnel for your office in the next budget cycle? Less. Has Thurston County grown in population and need for additional services? Yes. Are you able to do the same or more work with less funding for personnel? No. Do you feel you have adequate funding to operate the office through the biennium budget for years 2026 and 27? No, and for the reasons I've stated, I will be forced to reduce my hours of operation, which I have already reduced by three hours per day. I may be forced to cut my services completely at the counter and provide only online services to the public, for which I am allowed to do by law according to my deputy prosecutor. Thank you.
Yes, Judge Skender. Yes, please.
Thank you. So, the questions, I'll go through them in order. Are the lawful duties performed by the office you have been elected to mandated or discretionary under state law? The responsibilities of Superior Court are mandated by the state constitution and by statute. The breadth and scope of the work that's done in Superior Court is huge and mammoth, covering all felony criminal matters, all large civil cases, all family law, and all actions aimed at government action in terms of challenging that action. What is the current level of FTEs budgeted for your office that you oversee? This is difficult because the commissioner's office has been attempting to ameliorate the critical underfunding of the Superior Court. The current FTE level combined for both Superior Court and juvenile court would be 100. Do you have excessive personnel to perform the duties and cover the time and locations that you, that your office serves? We do not. The entire Board of County Commissioners has been engaged, has come to Superior Court, both at the main campus and at the family juvenile court. They have been interested, and they have acknowledged that we were at below minimal funding levels. That was why Superior Court made a request of one and a half million dollars for new positions that were aimed at accessibility, safety and security, and another, a number of other issues that were areas where the court needed funding. Those requests were all denied, every single one of them, including money that the, a prior board removed from the court to be able to pay jurors to come and serve as jurors. That also was denied. Instead, there was a two and a half million dollar cut aimed at Superior Court and the family and juvenile court, further critically underfunding an area that this board has acknowledged was underfunded to begin with. On top of that, 1.1 million was cut from the clerk's office, which is a constitutionally required office that provides support for Superior Court. So, a total of 3.6 million dollars was cut. Thirty-one percent of the board's proposed cuts were targeting Superior Court operations. Is the proposed budget provided more or less for personnel for your office in the next budget cycle? It does not. Our work continues to grow. This county continues to grow. Commissioner Fornia wrote a very thoughtful and thought-provoking article for The Chronicle recently about the role that the court serves as a critical piece of the infrastructure to provide public services to the people of this county. The budget does not reflect that same mandate. Has Thurston County grown in population and need for additional services? You all know that, and the job that the board has in terms of determining how monies are spent is a challenging job. No one thinks it's an easy job. But our county continues to grow, and the priority for funding should be on core services that are required by the constitution. Public safety is a huge component of that. As this board knows, when there's investments in, our sheriff is here, and our sheriff has been trying to address the need to have more law enforcement for our community. The reality is, when we make that investment, where will those cases go? They go to Superior Court. The felony cases are the cases that are the most serious in our county. So, when there are stakeholders where money is being provided, there also has to be money provided to Superior Court to be able to do all that work. Otherwise, it's like a table where you chop one leg out and the whole table falls. And my worry is that's where we're at. Are you able to do the same or more work with less funding for personnel? We are not. Work will suffer. There is already one lawsuit that's been filed since the board passed the preliminary budget. Thurston County, unfortunately, I think, will face more lawsuits for not providing for this critical public services infrastructure. Do you feel you have adequate funding to operate the office through the biennium budgets for the years 2026 and 2027, and why? We do not at this point. It is going to cause us to be able to reduce what we can do. I am very worried for this community. I moved to Thurston County in 1996. I came to the Thurston County Prosecutor's Office as an attorney in 2000, and I'm proud to have Thurston County be my home. I love it here, and I love my job. But this level of critical underfunding is not sustainable, and I'm worried that we are just beginning to see the harm that will come from that. The state has been going through a series of lawsuits aimed at areas where the state did not arguably, because all of the cases that come to court, we have to deal with in a neutral and objective way, but there have been a number of cases where people have made accusations that the state government has failed in some way. We are seeing how much those cases are costing our state, and you're all well aware of that too. I don't want to see that happen for our county. Those are the court's questions. Those answers. Judge Thomas, did you have anything you wanted to add? All right, thank you.
Other responses to Mr. Pettit's? Okay. Then I will move.
I requested that these people make comment, and by law, upon my request, they're to make comments.
Vice Chair. When a department budget estimates are being considered, the official responsible for that budget must be made available on request of the taxpayer. It does not require a free-form discussion or holding of court. We have properly noticed the hearing and made all involved available for questions and coordinated follow-up. That's my comment on that.
Ms. Peterson?
Good morning. I'm responding on behalf of elected prosecuting attorney John Toonheim, who is not available to be here today because he is currently in court prosecuting a homicide case. And I am the chief of staff currently for the Thurston County Prosecuting Attorney's Office. Regarding the initial question from the public, from Mr. Pettit, regarding lawful duties performed by the office that Mr. Toonheim has been elected to, whether they are mandatory or discretionary, they are all mandatory. I know that probably everyone in this room knows that everything the prosecuting attorney does is not only governed by the state constitution, under Washington Constitution, Article One, Section 35, Article 11, subsection 5, and Article 11, subsection 4. The RCWs also specifically reference the mandatory amount that this shall prosecute for the prosecuting attorney all criminal and civil actions for the state and/or county here in Thurston County. So, there's essentially a dual role of mandatory for, of mandatory requirement of the elected prosecutor because representing both the state of Washington as well as the citizens of Thurston County in that role. Regarding question two, do we have excessive personnel to perform the duties and cover and time and locations? At this point, we do not have any excessive personnel. The court, as well as the clerk, has already referred to issues regarding Superior Court and some deficiencies as far as fully staffing there. We are barely holding on at the minimum within the prosecuting attorney's office. In the last two and a half months since the court, excuse me, the commissioners asked our office to go into a budget exercise, which fortunately, we did not have to go to the extreme reduction of the budget exercise, but simply the notification of a 26% budget exercise in early September led to the resignation of four deputy prosecuting attorneys, simply because they were afraid that their positions would be eliminated due to the budget reductions. We have been in a constant state of recruitment and retention concerns. Since the pandemic, it was only accelerated because of announcements of extreme budget deficiencies in early September of this year. To give the commissioners another concern as far as excessive personnel, the Supreme Court recent directive for public defense to have caseload caps that did not affect prosecuting attorney caps is also a great concern going forward into the 26, 27 biennium and the future. To give the commissioners an understanding, as well as the public an understanding of this, is that in 2024, the full year that we have data for, the 100% of the Class A felonies, all of which were prosecuted by our office, 63% were prosecuted by the public defense department. The remaining 37% were either conflict or private counsel. In our misdemeanor division, the misdemeanor, gross misdemeanors, and misdemeanor in the full accounting of 2024, 100% of the cases filed in misdemeanor were covered by our office, prosecuting attorney's office, and 48% were covered by public defense. The remaining 52% were conflict counsel or private counsel. I note that the FTE count in the misdemeanor unit is exactly the same, seven attorneys for prosecutor's office, seven attorney spaces for TCPCD for that discretionary. That's an example. In the Superior Court, the FTE count is 26 deputies for the prosecutor's office, 27 attorneys in Thurston County Public Defense. Mr. Toonheim in our office is greatly concerned that this is, this already disparity is going to be exacerbated every year that the Supreme Court caseload caps go into effect for public defense. What this will mean, answering the last question presented by Mr. Pettit to and the public, do we have adequate funding to operate the office, and what that will mean for the public if it is not provided for the next biennium? What it will mean is there will be an increased rate of declining and reducing to file felony nonviolent cases. We simply will not be able to do that. Even if the sheriff is able to make legitimate arrests of felony nonviolent, we will not have resources to prosecute them. It will also increase, as I noted, increased negative impact on recruitment and retention, as well as an obvious burnout for all Thurston County prosecutors, employees. In addition to the information regarding caseload that I noted, there are many, many additional caseload workload that are affected solely for the prosecuting attorney's office. We cover all of the criminal appeals for Thurston County. We cover all of the firearm reinstatement, all of the extraditions, all of the victim advocacy, which is again, a mandatory requirement, not only by RCWs, but by the state restitution, excuse me, constitution. We have deputy prosecutors respond to all serious crime scene calls, all autopsies, and we review cases for charging. We've discussed this before with the commissioners, but for the public to know, approximately 33 to 34% of all referrals are referred and reviewed by our office but are never filed and are never seen by anyone in the clerk, the court, or public defense. So, for all of those reasons, I, I hope I responded adequately to Mr. Pettit and the public's questions. Thank you.
Anyone else? Sheriff Sanders.
Good morning, Board. Just to answer these questions, are the lawful duties performed by the office you have been elected to mandated or discretionary under state law? I think most of you know that the jail is not optional, patrol is not optional, civil is not optional, so all of those are mandated. What is the current level of FTEs budgeted? That's kind of in flux. It's approximately 285 FTEs, but the public safety sales tax is still unlocking new positions for us as of today. Actually, I think we got our last three. Do you have excessive personnel to perform the duties and cover the time and locations that your office serves? No. Is the proposed budget provided more or less for personnel for your office in the next budget cycle? It is more. Has Thurston County grown in population and need for additional services? Absolutely. Are you able to do the same or more work with less funding for personnel? No. Do you feel you have adequate funding to operate the office of the biennium budget for years 2026 and 2027? Yes. The reason for that is that the public safety sales tax has completely bailed out the sheriff's office for the first time since 1852. I feel like we actually have an adequate number of deputy sheriffs and detectives. Our sex offense caseload is starting to fall because we have actual detectives working those cases now that are not being pulled to the road. We are in a point now where, for the first time in our history, we might actually get to a point where there's two deputies for every 200 square miles of law enforcement coverage, which is very exciting to me to not have law enforcement deputies going to violent crime by themselves. So, define the term operating budget means. I'm not quite sure what, what, what this, if this is a question for me? Thank you. All right. That's all I have. Thanks.
Okay, then I will move to Scott Herridge. Did I finish your name correctly?
You did, yes. I don't think I can add much of anything to everything that's being said, having listened to all of that. I had just, on a personal level, I'm a physician. I work with people with substance use disorders. The DUI drug court and the other therapeutic courts are incredibly helpful. I would invite
I would invite everybody to come to their graduations to get a sense for the incredible good that comes through the prosecutor's office and the courts of running that DUI drug court program. Thank you.
Any response to that needed? Nope. Megan Wells.
Good morning. Hi, Megan Wells, I'm president of the Strophi Foundation. I'm also a graduate of the DUI drug court program from 2019, and I have a pretty lengthy criminal history. So I can stand here and say that each one of these departments that's been mentioned, I personally worked with, and not always on the better side of the receiving end. But hearing some of the discretionary funding for the DV victims and the facilitators at the clerk's office, I have used those, those services, and they were very helpful to me, especially at a point in my life where I had minimal funds, I couldn't go and hire an attorney. So to me, those should not be discretionary funds. And my question is that with the population growth of Thurston County, it's projected to be 35% in the next 15 years. How can you justify cuts to any one of these departments with our county growth projections? Because each one of these pillars, if, you know, like Judge Skender said, if one leg is weak, it really impacts the rest of the table. And what do you anticipate the outcome for our public safety will be? I can tell you as a criminal, where I'm going to come and commit crimes is in Thurston County if I know I'm not going to be prosecuted. I may get picked up by the sheriff, but if there's no follow-through, this is where I'm coming to do my dirt. So I would just ask you to consider these things before you make your final judgments. Thank you.
Anyone who didn't get a chance to sign up, who is here to provide public comment on the law and justice pieces of the budget? Is there anyone online? I can't see all the names.
I'm not seeing anyone.
Can we make the names bigger?
Okay, those are all people I know? Last call. Okay, it's 10:45. We are going to be in recess. This is kind of a continuous public hearing. We're in recess until 11:15, where we will pick up with the same process for general government, including the assessor, auditor, commissioner's office, budget, treasurer, human resources, central services, and information technology. It's recess.